Ladies and gentlemen, actually, good evening. We're gonna get started. It says "Good afternoon" on my script. I just follow whatever they tell me to follow. This is a public hearing on ZONI text amendment 1901, accessory residential uses, accessory apartments. This ZTA will remove the requirement for conditional use approval for all accessory apartments, revise the limited use provisions for attached and detached accessory apartments, allow for the approval of detached accessory apartments in R-200, R-90, and R-60 zones, and generally amend the provisions for accessory apartments. A planning, housing, and economic development committee work session on this ZTA is tentatively scheduled for Monday, March 18. Persons wishing to submit additional material for the council's consideration should do so before the close of business, March 5. You will have three minutes to speak. A yellow light in front of you will come on when you have 30 seconds left in which you can finish your presentation. A red light will come on when your time is up and will stay on should you run over that particular allotted time. I also want to announce that Councilmember Hooker is not with us right now. He's in Silver Spring. There is a very interesting presentation event going on with the Kojanamdi Show on diversity in MCPS, and he's over there representing, obviously. It's in his district, so I'm sure he will watch the proceedings. To get started, we will begin our Group A. We have Claire Isley, Joel Rubin, Andy Leon Harney, Casey Anderson, Mish Boz, Ralph Bennett. All right, we'll begin with you, Claire. Please press the button at the bottom of the base right there. I know, isn't it interesting to be sitting there now?
[inaudible]
And then move the microphone closer so we can hear you. There we go.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
I feel like a Verizon commercial.
I know.
This is obviously condensed because Mark talks a lot. Claire Isley is speaking on behalf of the county executive who agrees we must address the persistent housing affordability problems in the county. He believes we need to be clear about the problems we're trying to solve and how best to solve them. Because ZTA 1901 creates more problems than it solves, the executive recommends retaining the current standards while exploring other options. ZTA 1901 amends legislation adopted in October 2018 that relaxed the standards by allowing all accessory apartments as a limited use and by creating a waiver process for anyone seeking relief from onsite parking and distance separation standards. It's too soon to tell whether these changes will have a positive effect or whether further tweaks are needed. ZTA 1901 does more than tweak the standards. It would eliminate an extra parking space and distance separation standards, increase the allowable size of units, and allow detached ADUs in the county's small slot zones. The lead sponsor says that the current zoning code views ADUs as more of a nuisance to be prevented than a beneficial solution to be encouraged. But legislative action over the past several years clearly indicates the county's shift toward recognizing the value of these units in response to the need for more affordable housing and also residents' requests for greater flexibility in adapting the use of their homes as needs change over their lifetime. At the same time, the current standards were adopted because many single-family neighborhoods have narrow streets, shared driveways, congested on-street parking conditions, and overcrowded schools. Unlike cities now adopting ADU initiatives, we are a county whose suburban areas are not well-served by transit. If our strategy is to dramatically increase the number of ADUs in these areas, we will add density and sprawl where it doesn't belong. Meanwhile, the Planning Department's 2017 rental housing study reports that existing metro-accessible neighborhoods have unmet demand for price-appropriate rental housing for those at or below 50 percent of AMI, which has led to thousands of lower-income households spending more than 50 percent of their income to live in the available higher-priced units. More ADUs in non-metro-accessible areas won't meet this need. There are two other problems the ZTA can't address: the high cost of building an ADU, which is widely recognized as the biggest impediment, and the amount of rent that the homeowner charges for, excuse me, for the unit. Viewed through an equity lens, the benefits associated with relying heavily on ADUs to increase the rental housing stock can disproportionately accrue to households who can afford to build them while failing to serve those already cost-burdened by rents. The county executive encourages council members to consider other initiatives with real potential to provide affordable housing where and for whom it's needed most.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Rubin.
Thank you, councilmembers, for hearing testimony today about the critical issue of affordable housing and the proposed ZTA for ADUs. My name is Joel Rubin, and I'm a member of the Town Council for the town of Chevy Chase and am appearing as our town's representative this evening. While there's an ongoing debate about the impact the ADUs would have on affordable housing in the county, the focus of my testimony tonight is on the impact that the proposed ZTA's would have on our town and its residents. In general, our residents support a broader right to have an ADU. Often, for rental income, family situations are gaining an ability to age in place. We're generally supportive of the goals of the proposed ZTA. However, our Town Council also has three core issues of concern about some of the specific details in the current draft of the ZTA. They are, one, ADU size and structure; two, setback requirements for the detached ADUs; and, three, parking. Here's a brief summary of the Town Council's views on these issues. First, for ADU size and structure. We believe that the 1,200-square-foot cap on ADU size should be maintained. This cap provides enough space for an ADU and question whether exceeding the cap would increase affordable housing in the county. Second, we also believe that if virtually half of the buildings were allowed to become an ADU, it would create a duplex. Many of our residents are concerned that duplex units would alter the single-family nature of our town, as R-60 zone communities such as ours are explicitly for single-family homes. C, if we're to have a conversation about allowing duplexes, we believe it should be open and transparent and acknowledge that that is a specific goal. Otherwise, our residents will view this as opaque rather than a transparent zoning change. Number two, setback requirements for the detached ADUs. A, our core position is that any detached ADUs must comply with all setback requirements for dwellings required by the county or local jurisdiction to protect the rights of immediate neighbors. B, ensuring that all detached ADUs comply with setback requirements will protect the privacy interests of neighbors as well as the residents of detached ADUs. C, this should not be seen as a limitation on having ADUs. That's because if there's difficulty in placing detached ADU on a small lot, the resident will still have the option of building one in the main structure, potentially with an addition. And D, lastly, we oppose any grandfathering that would permit old ancillary structures located up against the property line to be turned into a detached ADU, as concern for adequate separation of dwellings, in our view, outweighs all other factors and is a core component of our town's approach to land use. Three, parking. We're concerned that the increased off-street parking requirements in the ZTA may be burdensome for some of our residents, and we hope that the council will look carefully at the parking provisions in the proposed ZTA. We encourage it to develop an approach that takes into consideration the physical limitations of a property and its surrounding areas. In closing, we congratulate the council for taking on this issue and commit to working with you to ensure the county creates zoning rules that both increase affordable housing for our residents and are flexible to adapt to the differing physical characteristics of our communities.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Andy Leon Harney?
Thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Please press the button at the base of the microphone.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to the proposed ZTA. My name is Andy Leon Harney, and I'm the village manager of Section 3 of Chevy Chase. This ZTA does not provide for affordable housing. It's a dramatic reversal of the guidelines that the council, previous council, adopted, and proposed changes go well beyond what is permitted in neighboring jurisdictions. Section 3 is a densely populated down-county community with about 60 shared driveways and small lots many under 7,000 square feet. We are already struggling with stormwater issues due to the heavy rains in the last year and improvements that neighbors have made over time. The idea that a separate living unit could be placed in the backyard of an already densely populated community makes no sense. We've seen no data to support the demand for such units, nor does it in any way justify itself by providing affordable housing by large numbers of prospective tenants. With an estimated construction cost of $80,000 to $100,000, it's human nature that anyone building an independent unit will want to make their money back as quickly as possible. This proposal is really affordable housing, then why not make this rule with a proviso that all ADUs created will not exceed county rent levels for affordable housing per square foot? You're not proposing that because you know no one would build them. And where are the provisions for periodic inspections, as we do with apartment buildings? Or any rule that says units cannot be converted to short-term rentals? For those who want an elderly parent or an adult disabled child to live nearby, then yes, restore the conditional use. But if it converts to a rental property, put a square-foot limit in the affordable housing range to mandate that it cannot be used for short-term rentals, or the license would be revoked. Otherwise, this expansion of ADUs just creates another opportunity to build Airbnb units that damage the fabric of the community, introducing strangers who have no vested interest in paying attention to parking regulations and who have no allegiance to the community. Citizens of this county spent seven years developing the zoning code rewrite, but since it was developed, there have been 62 ZTA's enacted, and at least four of them address this gradual chipping away of single-family zoning via accessory apartments. There are no objective standards proposed by which a hearing examiner can be guided in waiving at parking or unit or spacing. Calling it a use and not a dwelling unit will not change what it is, especially when the supporting arguments are all about affordable housing. If you want single-family zoning, this is a larger discussion that should not take place as a ZTA. Changing the zoning code by stealth is not the way to go about this. You abuse the trust voters put in you if you pass this ZTA. When you put in a subdivision, WSSC has to determine if the existing infrastructure can support it. How would that work with ADUs in older neighborhoods? Just one more paragraph.
No, I'm sorry.
How much more impervious it will? Well, then I'll just say, how is it anything but the destruction of single-family zoning by stealth?
Thank you. We'll consider the rest of your written testimony. Thank you. Casey Anderson.
Thank you. The Planning Board strongly supports this ZTA. We believe that the answer to affordable housing is not one solution, but many. It requires, in some cases, direct rent subsidies. It requires a strong MPDU program, and the council did, in fact, reform the MPDU program last year to increase the requirement for the percentage of MPDUs in many parts of the county and provide some needed flexibility that will encourage the production of moderately-priced dwelling units. It will also require an increased supply of housing, particularly smaller units and accessory dwellings. So we feel that this is an important part of the spectrum of changes that the county needs to make in order to meet our affordable housing goals, which is not to say that it will solve the affordable housing problem, but it's one of many things that if we are going to seriously address the shortage of affordable housing, we really need to seriously consider this. I'd just make two points and reserve most of our specific comments for the work session. The first is that the jugular vein is parking. The size limitation, setback requirements, all those issues certainly should be discussed, and we'll have time to get into it in the details. But if I could leave you with one idea, it's that if you have to go through a hearing examiner process or a waiver process in order to establish that on-street parking is adequate, you're going to place serious obstacles to additional accessory dwelling units. And that's going to cost money. It will take time and introduce uncertainty in the process, which will discourage people from taking advantage of this opportunity. We have tried collectively, the Planning Board and the County Council, over the last couple of years to try to incrementally move accessory dwelling units into more of a by-right process, so there are objective standards to determine when they're appropriate and when they're not. So if there are going to be rules concerning on-street parking, they need to be objective and not subject to the discretion of a hearing examiner, or you're not likely to achieve very much with this ZTA. The second specific point that I wanted to make is that many people are concerned, and I think rightly so, with code enforcement. But ADUs that are illegal, that is to say, people build them or rent them out without getting a permit, without getting a license, without going through any sort of process, are not going to be inspected. Many people will point out that we don't have sufficient resources to inspect all the rental units of the county as regularly as we would like. That being as it may, if the units are not brought into the process, are not made legitimate, legal, formalized, then there will be no inspection at all, and that will create safety issues and problems for neighborhoods. So we would encourage you to look carefully at ways that we could make this more of a by-right process under objective standards in the places where they're appropriate.
Thank you. Mish Boz?
That's me. It's Mish Boz, and I'm here with two of my fellow Brookfield Planning Commissioners to tell you the experience of our small historic town has had with accessory dwelling units, ADUs. But first, let me put our observations in some context. Brookfield is a small incorporated town of about 53 households, founded in 1794, located two miles north of Alny, and is on the National Register of Historic Places. We received our own zoning authority in 1999, and with the assistance of then-town attorney Nancy Florine, we wrote our own zoning ordinance. Accessory apartments, as we call them in our ordinance, have had a continuous part of our town's history. Our restrictions on ADUs are minimal, with no limitation on size, configuration, or required parking. As shown in the photo examples included in our testimony, we allow ADUs as attached structures, basement units, and detached units. Other standards in our zoning ordinance control size and location for all structures in the town, and the Historic Preservation Commission also governs appropriate exterior modifications, additions to existing structures, as well as new houses. Currently, almost one-fifth of the town's households have accessory dwelling units, some as big as an additional small house and others as limited as a walkout basement. Speaking from our 20 years of experience, the town has not experienced negative impacts from ADUs, such as parking shortages, vandalism, lowered property values, or degradation to the historic village atmosphere. The many successful uses of our current ADUs include a rental unit, a family member with a medical condition, a family member who desires to age in place, a place for guests to stay for short-term visits, a bed and breakfast, an extra space for family and friends to stay over, a place for boomerang children who can't afford to live near their home. We believe the Brookfield zoning policy with ADUs has helped address the need for affordable housing while providing broader environmental, economic, and social benefits to the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Ralph Bennett?
Good evening. My name is Ralph Bennett. I'm vice chair of the Affordable Housing Conference of Montgomery County. At our board meeting on Friday, the 8th of February, the board voted to express support for this zoning text amendment. Montgomery County is facing a housing affordability problem of serious proportions. At the same time, residents are being attracted to the county for work and for opportunities like education and public amenities. This population cannot be accommodated solely by high-density housing in the inner county, which tends to be expensive, say, luxury, or by expansion of single-family zoning beyond its current limits. It should be noted that there appear to be a number of previously approved ADUs which have wrongly conveyed with the property sales. ADUs must be approved for new owners at property sales so that all units are recorded publicly. Confidence in the supervising agency must be maintained. So the existing single-family zones represent a major resource which, if judiciously supervised, can provide new affordable units in existing oversized houses and new small detached houses. In both cases, owners who may find their homes oversized and too expensive will be able to remain, providing housing for others and income for themselves. Housing like this is common in America's older cities and is coming to the suburbs. ZTA 19.01 will encourage such housing here. It was broadly supported at its rollout on January 19 by Councilmember Hans Reamer. The Affordable Housing Conference supports it enthusiastically.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Reamer?
Thank you. I really want to thank everyone who's here this evening to participate in this dialogue. We will, I'm chair of the Fed Committee. We will be considering amendments as we go. This is a process. We'll take this up in the next few weeks, and the Fed Committee will meet, I'm sure, more than once to review the issue and work through and get comfortable. Everyone will get comfortable with it, and then we'll proceed. I wanted to really thank those who testified this evening. Joel, thank you for your constructive, the town's constructive comments. I really appreciate your perspective. I had a good opportunity to sit down with you and with Barney Rush as well, and it was a good conversation and Mish, the, you know, the perspective of a community that is as historic as Brookfield and has been as intentional and supportive of this type of housing with success over many years is terrific. Casey, I just want to note that you gave a very complex testimony without any notes. That is typical of your knowledge of the issues, your real depth in your role, and I really appreciate your ability to do that. It's not every, it's not everyone who can. So thank you for your work there. I wanted to, regarding the comments, I wanted to ask council staff, there was some comments made, Ralph, I love you, Ben. There was some comments made by Ms. Harney about short-term rentals. I'm going to ask our council attorney to just describe what has been in the proposal that is before us about this question of whether a unit could be used as a short-term rental.
On Circle 5 of the ZTA, which is also line 62 to 85, it says an accessory apartment must not be located and not where any short-term rental residential use exists or is licensed. So you cannot do short-term rental and this, and in fact, you can only do one rental on the property.
Right. So you can't even have a, as proposed, you can't have a rent in the, you can't have a rental unit in the house either, and you couldn't use any part of the house or the accessory dwelling unit for a short-term rental?
Correct.
So that's a fairly restrictive approach to that, so.
But it doesn't, it doesn't address the question of whether you couldn't have an ADU that you then converted to a short-term rental use.
Twenty-one percent.
Okay. So. I'm sorry. I'm going to intervene. We have 35 speakers, and there was already an event for this, and there are going to be other sessions, lots of sessions, I'm sure. So I am going to restrict the public hearing for us to hear from you, from the community, and we really cannot get into a work session tonight. So I would ask my colleagues to please be respectful of that. So if you can finish.
Okay. I'll wrap it up. Ms. Isely, I'm not surprised, but I am disappointed that the county executive's response to this is to say no. I think we need to do better, and we will take this up at committee. Thank you.
Councilmember Glass?
Thank you, Madam President. I just have a quick question, and it's for Chairman Anderson. It's been mentioned and alluded to the number of illegal ADUs that exist. Is there a number? Do you have an estimate as to how many there might be in the county?
Well, that's the thing. If they're illegal, nobody really knows unless you go, unless you get a complaint about them. So I think there are plenty, I've spoken to many people, in fact, I think a couple of you are going to be hearing from, who will tell you that this is a pervasive problem. I'm not sure. Certainly, I don't doubt that in some places there are serious issues, but the point is, if we can't make it easy to draw people into the system so they can be inspected and made safe, we don't really know how many problem cases there are out there unless the next-door neighbor raises a complaint.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're going to move on to Group B. Pam Smith?
Thank you all for listening to us.
Thank you. Shannon Heaton, Lawrence Dichter, Harriet Quinn, Barry Whiteys, and Tina Slater. Shannon Heaton? Press the button on the base of the microphone.
So the first person to that here?
No.
All right. Hello, my name is Shannon Heaton, a resident of Twinbrook, and I am speaking today to urge you to support this measure. I am a public high school teacher in Montgomery County, and my husband is an overeducated and underpaid historian of drug policy. Between the two of us, we have a mortgage worth of student loan debt. This has delayed both buying a house and starting a family. We are in our mid-30s, and this situation is common among our generation. Accessory dwellings are a way to get a handle on our crushing student loan debt and as a way to house our elders, in our case, my aging mother. ADUs can help mitigate housing costs and keep young professionals in the county. Public school teachers might actually be able to afford to live in the county which they teach. With two incomes and no children, it is still hard for us to have enough money to live in the area. Montgomery County remains a challenging market. We can buy in Frederick County for several hundred thousand dollars less, but we would strongly prefer to remain in Montgomery County. So I hope you will provide more flexible housing opportunities by supporting this bill and keep people in the county.
Thank you so much. Lawrence Dichter?
Okay. Good evening. My name is Lawrence Dichter, and I'm a long-term resident of Silver Spring, where I am vice president of the South Four Corners Citizen Association. There are a few things more important to many of us than the neighborhood where we have chosen to live, and there are a few substitutes for the sense of security we enjoy from the bonds that are formed by having close trusting relationships with our neighbors. Disrupt those relationships, and you're left with a neighborhood in name only. As a recipe for conflict between neighbors, this is exactly what ZTA 1901 is guaranteed to achieve. County residents are tired of being told what they need by their elected officials instead of the other way around. This zoning text amendment is a perfect example of that. The sponsor of this amendment, once, maybe more than once, demonized his constituents who happen not to share his vision, calling them "a small but vocal few," this is a direct quote, "who vehemently oppose the changes we need to make for the future." He then went on to accuse our county executive, prior to his election, in a 45-point landslide over his principal opponent, of amplifying these views. Somehow, this vocal few managed to deliver a sweeping mandate to their amplifier-in-chief, proof positive that the vocal few is really the silent majority. Now, how many voters did any of you encounter on the campaign trail last year who begged you to destabilize their neighborhoods, unravel their social fabric, permanently alter their character, and undermine their unity and cohesion by pitting neighbor against neighbor? If any of you had told county homeowners that your vision included coveting their neighbors' sideyards and backyards for infill, as ZTA 1901 does, you probably would not be sitting here tonight, or at least not up there, maybe in the audience. If any of you had campaigned on turning our single-family residential neighborhoods, in which many homes have no off-street parking, including yours truly, into backyard cottage and duplex cities with all the overcrowding congestion and overtax infrastructure that goes with it, you probably would not be here tonight. And if any of you had told homeowners that your goal is to fundamentally alter the character of single-family residential neighborhoods through greater densities and heights, you definitely would not be sitting where you are tonight. So here we are. Here we are once again in another hearing in which a proposal has been teed up, not because of any groundswell in favor of it or because it has any grassroots support, but because privately-funded advocacy groups, developers, and other special interests see this as an opening to advance their ultimate goal of up-zoning vast swaths of the county and allowing multifamily housing in single-family residential neighborhoods. Since words matter, let's reframe what is really at stake here by calling regulations what they actually are: protections, which we all know is what keep us safe from harm and unwanted consequences. "We protect what we love," is the motto of the group that advocates for the preservation of the county's ag reserve and for a policy that has become the third rail for almost every Montgomery politician. Why aren't those neighborhoods that would be harmed by ZTA 1901 also sanctified? Do those of us who live in these neighborhoods love them any less than those who love the ag reserve?
Thank you.
Are we less worthy of your protection?
Thank you, sir.
I don't think so, and I'm sure most of you don't either.
Okay. Thank you. We'll consider the rest of your testimony. Harriet Quinn?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. Harriet Quinn, Planning and Land Use Chair of the Montgomery County Civic Federation. Our civic association and homeowner association members represent tens of thousands of Montgomery County residents. The county didn't just start approving accessory units four years ago during the zoning rewrite. Montgomery County has provided a path for approval of accessory apartments for more than 35 years and was the first jurisdiction in the region to do so. The county has always had the most licensed units and the most permissive standards of any jurisdiction in the region, and still does. Is it enough to address the lack of affordable housing? No. Unfortunately, there's been a lot of misinformation disseminated recently about this process, so I'd like to take a moment to provide some history. In 2012 and 13, we worked collaboratively and in good faith and extensively with a coalition of planners, housing advocates, and the council to come up with a more streamlined process for accessory apartment approval. These discussions were over many months, meetings and work sessions, including four public hearings. The standards and provisions were thoroughly reviewed by the Fed Committee and the council over months. At the time, approval took about seven months and cost $400. In the five-year period preceding the zoning rewrite, a total of four out of 85 applications were denied, a total of about 4 percent. OSA Director Grossman confirmed at the Fed Committee hearing last year on September 27 that none of the approved accessory apartment applicants had a lawyer or an engineer, as has been wrongly asserted as being necessary by some county officials. In addition to the existing 400 accessory apartments that were already approved, there were also hundreds of registered living units for relatives processed by the county. These are units for which rent is not charged. All of these were grandfathered in ZTA 1211. But the whole idea behind 1211 was to establish some objective standards that could be met by applicants to streamline the process. by applicants to streamline the process without a hearing, while also allowing for those properties that didn't meet the objective standards to still have an opportunity for approval through the conditional use hearing process. You eliminated that process in the fall. You've done two ZTA's since 1211 that have further reduced the standards. By eliminating that option, it's kind of the equivalent of eliminating the variance process for someone who can't meet the setback standards for an addition. And so, you've eliminated an opportunity for someone to have one. So, keep in mind, there are also thousands of unlicensed apartments out there that are not regulated, and since the adoption of 1211, four years ago, there have been 250 additional applications for Class III licenses that doesn't include the special exception ones that were approved prior to that. So, we think we need a better process here, and we'd like you to reinstate the ability to have a conditional use process for those that don't meet the standards. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Quinn. Barry Whiteys?
Good evening. I'm Barry Whitey, president of the North White Oaks Civic Association in Silver Spring. Our neighborhood is comprised of single-family homes, and a number of these homes have accessory apartments. Some have gone through the requisite accessory apartment process, but we've had many instances of accessory apartments that have not followed the law. DHCA struggles with ensuring compliance with the accessory apartment laws today. The county can spend considerable staff time getting these single-family duplex rentals licensed and compliant with the Health and Safety Code provisions to protect the properties, residents, and adjacent neighbors. I've included in my testimony an article from the then-Gazette paper from a few years ago, describing a fire in Wheaton that involved overcrowding code violations, and the Montgomery County Fire Rescue official was quoted as saying that he'd seen numerous single-family homes converted into multiple dwellings, and the conversions are often not up to county code with wiring and construction, said that sometimes the apartments don't have adequate exits or smoke detectors. So, these properties are both a risk to the residents who are renting them now, perhaps illegally, as well as the adjacent neighbors. So, our position is that before loosening the accessory apartment laws, we must have single-family inspections on all 1-4 family rental properties, including accessory apartments that are rented, similar to the provisions of the multifamily properties which were enacted after the Flower Branch apartment tragedy a few years ago. The council's Bill 1915 provides for regular inspection of multifamily rentals and provides for corrective action plans for troubled properties, and that's what we need for the 1-4s as well. The county also struggles to obtain compliance through district court for some non-compliant renter owners. Councilmember Hucker described this problem in the memo that I've included in my testimony that he wrote to the county attorney in 2018. The county attorney's response, which is also included in my testimony, was unsatisfactory. The county should institute a housing court similar to that successfully used in Cleveland, Ohio. The threat of significant sanctions for noncompliance are also important. I've included in my testimony a description of the remedies that the city of San Francisco can impose on noncompliant rental property owners, which can be a model for Montgomery County. While opposing any ADU legislation until an effective inspection and enforcement regime is instituted, two provisions are particularly objectionable in the bill. The first concerns reducing the number of off-street parking spaces. The council shouldn't increase the number of ADUs permitted in an area while at the same time reducing parking. We find that almost every adult resident living in a single-family rental property in our community owns a car, our streets are too narrow to allow for a car to go by, and finally, we oppose taking away the notice of a sign when an accessory apartment is being instituted. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Whiteys. Ms. Tina Slater?
President Navarro and council members, I'm Tina Slater from Silver Spring, and I'm testifying tonight on behalf of Montgomery County Sierra Club in favor of ZTA 1901. The public workshop held by Councilmember Reamer was very helpful in providing information, answering questions, and addressing misunderstandings, several of which I had before the workshop. The demand for housing in our county has outpaced supply, causing two problems. First, many folks who'd like to live in Montgomery County can't find a housing unit, and second, for those who do find one, the cost may be too high. And if people have to leave the county for affordable housing, we will still have the benefit of their traffic. Most ADUs will be modest, both in size and amenities, and typically provide modest rents. So, this is a low-cost means to increase affordable housing. ADUs will expand the supply of housing near transit. A 2018 report commissioned by the council found that about 70% of ADU applications were in Silver Spring, Bethesda, Rockville, or Gaithersburg, communities with convenient access to public transit. The ADU approach to expanding affordable housing has two practical advantages over many other approaches. Advantage one, expanding ADUs has no impact on the county budget, unlike, say, increasing the HOC fund. Advantage two, expanding ADUs does not ask developers for anything, like we do under the MPDU program. So, this ZTA supplements those approaches and could increase the number of affordable units, and it also simplifies the approval process. Some other benefits, ADUs allow children or grandchildren to live nearby but in separate quarters. Seniors can stay in their home and rent an ADU to supplement their retirement income. In the past, we've given neighbors extraordinary veto power over housing. However, this ADU could actually provide geographic equity. ADUs could be built in wealthy, middle-income or lower-income neighborhoods, and the ADUs would be using existing infrastructure. Finally, parking frequently comes up as an issue, but most of the existing ADUs are in communities close to transit, and perhaps they would be built in neighborhoods around BRT routes. We support expansion of opportunities for ADUs in Montgomery County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to Group C. Kimberly Prasad, Dennis Cardosa, Lisa O'Connor, Carl Elefante, Janet Johnson, and John Pox... Poxtis.
I can read this.
That's a challenging pronunciation for me. Poxtises. Okay. All right, Ms. Prasad. Press the button at the base of the microphone. There you go.
I would like to thank the county council for this opportunity to speak on ZTA 1901. On paper, I find the current changes interesting. However, they leave me confused. Are these changes to the code going to apply to all of Montgomery County? The reason I'm asking is that I live in Wheaton. We have a proliferation of unregistered ADUs already in existence. We already have sheds and garages being turned into illegal ADUs. We already have people living in basements with their own do-it-themselves gas and electric hookups. And have you forgotten the parking situation in Wheaton? It's so bad, people are putting orange cones, and when the county does their sweeps, they replace the orange cones with garbage receptacles. We now have our first responders complaining that they can't see oncoming traffic and pedestrians due to how cars are being parked on our overcrowded streets. So, who is this ZTA 1901 really for? Is it predominantly white affluent communities such as Tacoma Park, Chevy Chase, and Bethesda? Is there some kind of unspoken rule that the county will continue to overlook the way black immigrants continue to live in overcrowded, broach and rat-infested communities? And what about enforcement? Who exactly is going to inspect and license all these illegal ADUs in Wheaton and the rest of Montgomery County? I was told by code enforcement that they didn't have the resources to inspect, and I know they don't enforce registering these homes. And FYI, according to code enforcement, they have no way of enforcing the two unrelated individual rule. It's my understanding that Tacoma Park has to register their ADUs and get them inspected. Perhaps the conversation you need to have is with the county officials in Tacoma Park. And where is this impact statement? Is there going to be an impact statement on how increased density impacts the environment, the streets, parking, and basic services like trash? How would this bill, if Wheaton is to be included, how is this bill going to impact Wheaton and the ADUs that we already have? Sponsoring this bill is the height of irresponsibility. How can you loosen restrictions that are not being enforced in the first place? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dennis Cardosa? Lisa O'Connor?
Thank you. Montgomery County made a promise, a contract, a set of terms that define the vision, plan, and growth for the county. That promise, that contract is in the zoning, and in our codes, and in the Maryland National Capitol Park and planning codes. Those definitions in the zoning are what drove many homeowners to find our American dream in Montgomery County. We moved out of apartments into townhouses. We saved up enough to buy that fixer-upper in the neighborhood that embodied our aspirations. Some of us did this several times to achieve the kind of living, the kind of neighborhood and community that each of us wanted. Unlike the promises of tax reform, better public transportation, and a bike path that spans the full intercounty connector that are soon forgotten, zoning is a fundamental, a promise. It's not just to the homeowner, but to all residents, homeowners and renters alike across Montgomery County. Those are promises that drove the last 100 years of county planning for water, sewer infrastructure, electrical supply and distribution, roads, parking, schools, traffic management, pollution, storm runoff, green space, environmental protection measures to our land and water ecosystems, recreation's library, and, sorry, Councilmember Hucker isn't here, but light pollution that prevents us from sleeping at night and seeing the sky. I'm a businessperson, and I've been in my career for over 30 years. When there's a major change proposed, there is due diligence, and there are impact assessments for the proposed change. I've seen none of those, and that concerns me. Our current infrastructure is not designed for this proposal, and the costs and impacts of this change have not been evaluated or calculated. What will be the collateral damage on our bond rating if we break our promise and devalue or overtax the county land, resources, or infrastructure? Bonds like the market like certainty. Certainty is careful strategic planning and predictability. The current state of zoning enforcement is completely ineffective, and unlike Seattle, as of February 12th, we have three people working this job on ADUs, inspecting them. So, is it a surprise that this isn't working well? That's not enough, even for our current programs. And we wonder why they're poorly monitored and inadequately enforced. And the reason why we only have 133 registered, I think a number of people have talked about it, is because most of them are not registered, and the county frankly is not able to keep up with the reporting that the communities are doing to report these units. We have the wrong metric for success here. And now, we expect the same group to manage a more complex system with more volume, detached, attached, and small accessory dwellings. They're grossly under-resourced, and as a result, they're really challenged to perform their jobs in this. And everybody in this room tonight can probably name three or four properties in their neighborhoods that stand out. It should be a slideshow. I also am concerned, too, and several other folks have said that, about the cited benefits of ZTA 1901. Two things people have to know, owner occupied can be waived, and I think some had already said that there's no definition or no subtle definition of what related or unrelated is. Again, I think we really need to keep our promise to homeowners, and right now, the way I feel, the county is failing to enforce what we currently have.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Carl Elefante?
Good evening.
Before you start, sir, yes, can you please turn off the microphone that's on?
John.
Yeah, thank you so much, so we can hear you. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Carl Elefante. I'm a 26-year resident of Tacoma Park, Maryland. I live in an R-60 zone on a 6,000-square-foot lot with 1,500-square-foot residence that includes the area of an accessory building on my lot. I pay over $5,000 a year in taxes on this property, and for me, this is an issue about me being able to stay in my house for the next 20 years, and an aging-in-place issue for me. I also want to say that I've been a resident for 26 years next door to a legal licensed ADU that has actually allowed me to live next door to a series of residents who have lived in that ADU that have made my neighborhood a better place to live. I would also just bring in some perspective professionally from my positions with the local chapter president of the American Institute of Architects, the state chapter president. During that period, I also served on the zoning advisory panel, and I just want to say that as a member of that zoning advisory panel, I was disappointed with what the result was on the accessory dwelling units. I think that we really let an opportunity slip by. So, I'm here to strongly support this, and I just want to take a second and give a little bit of context about our county. As you well know, we have over a million residents. That's about 375,000 households. The median income of those households is just under $100,000. The property value of those households is just under $500,000. That's a ratio that most bankers would be concerned about. 64.7% of our households are owned by the residents. So, this is about a county where owner-occupied housing is the predominant pattern, almost two-thirds. Over 70% of those households pay more than $3,000 a year in property taxes. So, affordability in this county is a day-to-day real issue for many, many people that live in this county. And I'll just end with a little anecdote about, again, my neighborhood. An R-60 zone, tiny lots, R-60 zones amount to about 6% of the county land. So, something that impacts those people that are actually living in the most affordable zone in the county, literally only affects 6% of the land. The current rules basically make it so that on my lot, my block, one lot would be allowed to have a legal accessory dwelling unit. In other words, 5% of the population is actually served by the current regulations. I'd like to see 95% of the population served by that. Thank you.
Janet Johnson?
Good evening. While I do support the concept of increasing the options of housing within Montgomery County, this generation needs to be accepting and open to multitude of formats and how individuals live in our county. Diversity makes our community richer. But the current proposal that has been presented falls far short of protections to the current homeowners. I live in the Aspen Hill area, an area wrought with an extreme number of multi-unit dwellings in single-family residents. The current regulations are basically ignored. Inspectors don't arrive. Police don't arrive to remove individuals from parking in your driveway or blocking your driveway. This is an example. This was left on my car because I had to park on the street because someone blocked the driveway. This takes 16 hours for Montgomery County police to address in this county. 16 hours. This is not a one-time occurrence. This happened two days after the last open discussion on this. It's the third one in a month. In this county, I pay, my taxes have tripled since 1999, when I purchased my house on Janet Road, and yet, I cannot get enforcement to take care of the zoning situations in my community. The county has completely turned a blind eye to it, and reducing the standards we currently have is opening Pandora's Box. We will have a situation that, where I live, we have a household with 10 vehicles with a 1,500-square-foot Cape Cod, across the street from a household with a 1,500-square-foot house with seven vehicles, and the one on the corner with nine. Our street is one and a half blocks long, and we have 17 houses. That was just the first three on the block, and the county doesn't do anything to relieve the people who have been in that area for 15, 20, 30, and 40 years. And this continues every day. The changes proposed to the zoning laws will only increase the problem. There is no recourse for the current homeowners, and I doubt that there will be a proposal to see that. We don't have a density study, we don't have a traffic study, and we certainly don't have compliance, and the county is not ready to make that decision, to move forward, to make compliance required.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. John Poxtis?
Good evening. My name's John Poxtis. I'm the president and CEO of Habitat for Humanity Metro Maryland. Habitat for Humanity is a nonprofit corporation that was formed under the state of the laws of Maryland in 1982 for the purpose of... of Maryland in 1982 for the purpose of creating decent and affordable homeownership opportunities in Montgomery and Prince George's County. It is our belief that Habitat is in a unique position to help solve the affordable housing crisis by building accessory apartments, also known as ADUs. Habitat is a licensed general contractor with substantial experience building new single-family homes, townhouses, and rehabilitating distressed foreclosed properties in the area. Habitat's repair and weatherization program has helped hundreds of owner-occupied homeowners, including older adults and veterans, improve the quality of life, and help reduce energy bills. Our county has a large area of single-family detached zones with homes that are unaffordable to many. Oftentimes restrictive zoning policies lead to segregated neighborhoods and schools. We believe that broadening the ADU requirements is one small step to encourage more socio-economically integrated communities. Habitat for Humanity strongly supports zoning text amendment 1901 introduced by Councilmember Reamer. Habitat supports the notion that implementing the provisions of this zoning text amendment will reduce barriers to low-income means of adding to the housing supply. Habitat for Humanity is particularly interested in serving residents with household incomes that are less than 80% of area median income, including older adults, veterans, and individuals with disabilities. Habitat is convinced that ADUs will help seniors keep and protect the value of their home while allowing them to stabilize their income and age in place. ADUs are an important housing solution because they provide affordable housing for adult children or grandchildren to live separately but close by. Affordable housing for parents or grandparents to live separately but close by. Affordable housing for older adults, veterans, Manilian... I can't say it because I'm not one. And individuals with disabilities.
Millennial.
Millennial, okay. ADUs can provide additional income for older adults and fixed income. So I've listed some environmental, social, and economic benefits that is documented in my testimony. I'll leave it there. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much. Thank you. We're going to proceed to Group D. Cheryl Court, Amanda Farber, Dan Wilhelm, Beth Baker Baker, sorry, Stephen Crawford, Is Cheryl Court here?
Yes.
There you are. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Is it on? Thank you. My name is Cheryl Court. I'm with the Coalition for Smarter Growth. We're the leading organization in the Washington DC region dedicated to advocating for walkable, inclusive, and transit-oriented communities and the land use and transportation policies and investments needed to help those communities flourish. Montgomery County is a great place to live and work, but for many, finding a suitable home to live in can be difficult because of high prices. For many existing residents who may have lived in their homes for years, changing needs in their families may demand a more adaptable home. One part of the solution to these challenges is accessory dwelling units. Reforming onerous restrictions on accessory units helps to seamlessly diversify the county's housing stock and better adapt homes as households' needs change over time. An accessory dwelling can help an older homeowner age in place or enable a young family to be able to purchase a new home. An ADU might also be a perfect solution for a returning adult child or an aging parent. Accessory dwellings both help individual families and help communities adapt an existing housing stock to new needs as they change over time. ADUs have the distinct advantage of offering the potential for low-cost housing, especially in high-demand neighborhoods, since the land is not part of the cost of building. For these reasons, we are enthusiastic supporters of ADUs in Montgomery and in the region. The proposed changes to the current code will greatly improve the prospects for a homeowner to undertake the creation of an accessory unit on their property. At the same time, the changes strike a balance with the preservation of building standards important to many community members. Current rules discourage homeowners from building ADUs, and the county has lagged behind more innovative communities which have reformed their ADU regulations. Montgomery housing planning studies have repeatedly cited ADUs as part of the solution for a cross-section of housing challenges. In 2018 alone, the planning department highlighted ADUs as solutions in two of their studies, the Missing Middle Housing Study and the Housing for Older Adults Study. These studies noted zoning impediments that prevent making ADUs a meaningful part of the county's housing choices. ZTA 1901 addresses the impediments and will set the course for graceful inclusion of new housing opportunities benefiting homeowners and communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Amanda Farber. Dan Wilhelm.
For the record, I'm Dan Wilhelm. I'm president of the Greater Colesville Citizens Association. GCCA generally opposes ZTA 19-01, dealing once again, this comes up all the time, every few years, with this relaxing the restrictions on accessory dwelling units. We agree that housing in a county is expensive, and steps need to be taken to provide affordable housing. Current county policies contribute to making new housing very expensive, and in some cases so costly, to build that new housing will not be built. In Colesville, in Lido, for example, just the impact taxes, the LATIP fee add $47,000 to the price of a detached house, which is about 11% of the going rate for houses in the area. These charges in other county fees mean that it's financially difficult to build a new housing in orange, yellow, and green policy areas. The county needs to look at the fees it is charging, not only for affordable housing, but also for the tax situation that you're starting to face now. We support five things listed here. One is continue to support that the property must be owner-occupied. We support that the requirement for no more than two adults can reside in the ADU. We support the proposed change to allow the dwelling unit as unlimited use in the R-200 and R-90 zones as long as the property complies with the other zoning restrictions. Also, I'd like to amplify and say, the enforcement is a real issue, and this is a problem we've had for decades, and the county largely doesn't have enforcement. So that's something that needs to happen. We support the proposed change relative to the maximum size of the ADU, and we also support the change for the ADU in the basement as well as a cellar. We oppose reducing the restriction on parking. The planning board debated this issue, and you heard from Casey earlier, dealing with on-site parking. We think that way to address Casey's point is to make sure there's two travel lanes plus lanes for parking on either side. A lot of the streets in our area are basically one-lane roads, and it needs to be space on either side for people to pass. We oppose deleting the distance requirement between ADUs since these would change the character of the neighborhood, and this is in addition to all the other special exception group homes and short-term rentals that occur in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Beth Baker here? Stephen Crawford?
Thank you all for working on this tricky ADU issue. My name is Steve Crawford, and I'm a research professor at George Washington University's Institute of Public Policy. However, I am not here today testifying as an expert on land use, but as a durwood homeowner who is concerned about affordable housing. That concern led me to attend the Community Policy Forum hosted by Hans Reimer on January 19th. There I learned lots, including about the parking and code enforcement challenges that ADUs present in some neighborhoods. Yet, I came away and remain convinced that the county should relax its restrictions on ADUs along the lines proposed in ZTA 1901. The reasons are fairly straightforward. First, more ADUs would enable more children or aging parents to live independently but close by, thus strengthening families and reducing travel to visit such relatives when they live farther away. Second, more ADUs would allow young families and empty nesters to generate additional income and thus to afford a residence that might otherwise be beyond their means. This is especially important for older residents whose children have moved out. We know that growing numbers of seniors want to stay in their homes where they feel comfortable and know their neighbors. Third, easing restrictions in ADUs is a painless way to accommodate a growing population. The choice before us seems pretty clear: more sprawl, with all its negative impacts on the environment, or more density. Montgomery County is already promoting dense development around transit hubs, but there are limits to that approach. Some housing advocates are calling for measures to allow multifamily units, townhouses, or small apartment buildings in places now zoned for single-family homes. And the day may come when that is the least bad option we have. For now, however, we can add capacity without changing the character of these communities or engaging in the difficult disagreements that such more radical proposals would elicit. Of all the reasons for establishing more ADUs, however, the most important is to increase the supply of moderate-priced housing in a county where housing affordability is a huge and growing challenge. There are two ways to address housing affordability: increase the supply of housing, especially moderate-priced housing, or legislate rent controls, which have been disastrous elsewhere. The latter approach has proved disastrous in many places, but the pressure to take such action is growing because so many workers in Montgomery County cannot find a decent residence for under 40% of their income. They commute from as far away as Prince George's or Washington Counties, adding to the congestion on our roads and carbon emissions in our air. We'd urgently need to increase the supply of moderate housing in Montgomery County, and easing restrictions on ADU is an easy way to do so.
Thank you. Paul Geiser.
Thank you. Does everybody in the council have this handout? So my name is Paul Geiser. I'm a longtime Kensington resident. I work for Land as Architects Builders in Tacoma DC. The second page of my presentation is my message tonight. Good intentions can have unintended consequences. The top picture is a picture of a DC house. We're doing an ADU in the back. The ADU is subservient to the house. It's smaller in scale. It's tucked back. But when this could be expanded to the logical limits of what we can do in Montgomery County, you may get a very different picture if everybody does that kind of expansion. ZTA 1901 addresses both ADUs that are part of the existing house and those that are separate structure. I'm only going to address the extra ADUs today with our concerns. We applaud the council's efforts to rewrite this legislation in a less restrictive manner to address the affordable housing crisis. The next page is a comparative site plan we did. We took a site on Chase Avenue, 4606, 5,200 square feet, and we laid out an ADU per the Montgomery County zoning. As an architect, I support smart growth and thoughtful zoning for detached ADUs. The intention of the drawings we prepare is to point out some of these unintended consequences that the council can visualize what the proposals could mean for county neighborhoods. The next picture is a model, a 3D model of what we believe would be acceptable under the rules of an ADU, 24 by 24. The height is measured to the midpoint of the roof at 15 feet for a gambler roof. Dormers, as long as they don't take up more than half the space on the roof, don't matter, and cupolas are exempt from the housing standards. So this structure could be 30 feet tall. When pushed up against the house, on the next slide, you can see that the cupola looms over the one-story house. There's no distance requirement in the current zoning law between the main house and accessory structures that is present in the Arlington zoning. There's no limit on the percentage of the rear yard you can occupy. DC has that. So if all the neighbors did the same, you go to the next slide, and we have six properties who all want accessory building. Not sure how I feel about that. It seems a little crowded. This is on a 5,200-square-foot lot. As the lots get bigger, obviously, everybody has a little more breathing room. So this is a diagram intended to show you what this could look like if expanded, and our recommendations are as follows. If it's adopted, it's written here, some unintended consequences and issues: possible stormwater, service increase, I'm sorry, water service increase if you add two toilets, you're going to get a new water line, stormwater runoff, drainage requirements, loss of green space, and property values. What's the goal? We had 133 approved in six years. If we just did 2% of the 186 homes, we'd have 3,720 units. We don't have to make every house have an accessory building. You can follow up on the rest. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Really, I do appreciate your material. I think it's great to be able to see.
And again, we're welcome to help pro bono with any illustrations you want to help understand this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, now we're on to Group E. Jeffrey Slaven, Mayor Slaven here. Eliana Schinder, Bernard Brill, Darlene Bell-Zuccarelli, Paul Jerosinski, and Eric Brenner. Okay, we're going to begin with Eliana Schinder. Press the button at the bottom of the base there, yes.
Hi. Hello. My name is Eliana Schinder. I am a residential architect. I practice in Maryland, Virginia, and Washington DC. I am experienced in the design, documentation, and permitting of additional dwelling units, mainly in the District of Columbia. As an architect, I came to express my support to the zoning amendment. From neighbors in my area to my own clients, I experienced firsthand the benefits of additional dwelling units. Mainly, I've seen the benefits of families living closer to each other. Also, with additional dwelling units, I've seen how individuals on the lower-income spectrum can live in neighborhoods historically inaccessible to them. I've seen them have access to schools and libraries that were far away from houses that they could historically live in. The population in need of these type of housing that are smaller and more affordable are less likely to own cars and drive. With the implementation of additional dwelling units, the properties and the physical characteristics of the neighborhood gets minimal negative impact on the existing infrastructure, including transportation, electrical, water, and plumbing. As I have seen in Washington DC firsthand, and as an architect, I encourage you to welcome more and different types of families to Montgomery County. They are currently in different places in the economic spectrum, and they need a place to live. This amendment will allow teachers to afford to live near the schools where they teach at, and they will allow nurses to live closer to the hospitals they serve. To avoid myths of tiny houses featuring television, additional dwelling units do follow all building codes, and they're just as safe and sustainable as any other house in Montgomery County. I brought here a flyer of design that outlines all the building requirements that additional dwelling units must comply with. I can hand it later. If I can leave you with one idea tonight is to encourage you to pass this zoning amendment.
Thank you very much. Bernard Brill.
My name is Bernard Brill. I have been a county resident for more than 40 years and living in the Falls Reach community for the past 34. Currently, I am president of Falls Reach Homeowners Association of Potomac. Our community has 293 homes and includes both townhouses and detached homes. Our homeowners association has been in existence since 1978, and by the way, includes MPD units as well. One of the many reasons my wife and I chose Falls Reach is because it was governed by a homeowners association with covenants approved by the county. In fact, for the past 40 years, we've lived in townhouse communities, HOA communities, as well as condominium homeowners associations. We definitely like the fact there are rules to preserve the look and lifestyle of each of these communities. As HOA president, our community has concerns about how the proposed zoning text amendment, if approved, would impact HOAs like ours. Will people renting ADUs be entitled to use HOA facilities such as basketball courts, swimming pools, walking paths, and so forth? Will they be required to pay HOA fees? Will they be forced to abide by the same rules and regulations as other homeowners? What impact will it have on our crowded schools? Who will be responsible for policing this? We ask that you protect the integrity of our homeowners associations by allowing the covenants to continue managing such decisions. I seriously doubt that the council wants to begin intervening in HOA matters or disputes between neighbors. To this end, we are asking that expressed language be added to the zoning amendment that indicates that regardless of the changes of the zoning ordinance, all homeowners remain subject to association covenants. There is precedence for this as the county council adopted such language in their short-term rental bill. And by the way, in our community, there are multiple examples of homeowners who have requested and were granted permission by the HOA to put additions onto their homes to house their parents. When people make decisions to buy to an HOA community... When people make decisions to buy into an HOA community as part of their investment, there's an understanding that they are also buying into their common amenities, such as county-approved density and zoning requirements, rules governing design styles, walking paths, parks, and so forth. When Falls Reach community was originally designed and later approved by the county, government officials closely examined the expected impact of the environment, density, local schools, waste pickup, traffic patterns, streets, and roads. As our community aged and with the children growing up, I witnessed many examples where some households had not just two cars, but more than four, and sometimes six, allowing homeowners to add tenants to their properties with only compound problems such as this. Falls Reach is, you know, we're concerned about the stresses that's going to place on the infrastructure, such as the fire service, EMS, police, as mentioned, schools. I urge the council to protect the homeowners association by not taking away their authority to manage their communities.
Thank you very much. Darlene Bell-Zuccarelli here. Paul Jarosinski?
My name is Paul Jarosinski. I represent the Cherrywood Homeowners Association, a 606-unit HOA located in Alney. I'm here on behalf of the Cherrywood community to voice our opposition to ZTA 1901. Montgomery County recently updated master plans and zoning in a pro-development direction, adding millions of developable square feet in Bethesda and White Flint. Proposed ZTA 1901 basically throws out all that zoning work and allows the doubling of density in single-family neighborhoods throughout the entire county. This is a serious breach of trust for homeowners who have invested a half a million dollars or more in a home with some green space based on zoning in place at the time of their investment in their property. It is also open to serious abuses by developers. Changing the zoning after developments are built makes county property owners just trustful of the county planning process and council, causing residents to wonder what will be next. Doubling the density after a community is built doubles infrastructure requirements, including police, fire, and especially schools. These additional houses and backyards will also replace oxygen-exchanging green space with impervious surfaces that will add to flooding problems. Worst of all, accessory apartments often lead to parking issues that the county lacks when it comes to enforcement. In places like Cherrywood, where the streets are narrow and there are many courts, these parking issues will create havoc as well as slow emergency response. In Alney, the post office will not deliver mail if a car is parked in front of a mailbox. Lastly, allowing the density to double also exacerbates traffic congestion. In Alney, we already have three F-level intersections. While this ZTA may be a boon to the construction industry, it will irreparably change the character of existing neighborhoods, changing many folks who saved for years to move up to a neighborhood with some green space to move to other counties to realize their dream. The two example pictures on Hans Reamer's video are particularly disturbing to homeowners. One shows a trailer parked in the backyard, and the other shows a new two-story house that blocks sunlight from the neighbor's deck and garden. The council has already implemented a better plan to address affordable housing, as Hans Reamer's note on 219, where 15% of new development is dedicated to affordable housing. This success has already been realized in Bethesda, Rock Spring, and White Flint. It makes more sense to locate the housing in urban areas where other amenities are already present and mass transit is walking distance away rather than suburban neighborhoods. If the council is considering this proposal to generate more income to cover the $211 million deficit, the council should recall the advice of their budget analysis that said the increasing share of housing units that are multifamily units also places downward pressure on income tax revenue. The continued liberalization of the accessory apartment process represents retroactive zoning for existing single-family detached homes in Montgomery County and its bad policy. We urge you to reject this proposal. If you feel the need to move forward on this legislation, it should be restricted to a small area of the county or put before the voters in the form of a referendum, since it overrides all the master plans and current zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Brenner?
Okay. Thank you. My name is Eric Brenner. I've owned my home in Silver Spring for 25 years, about a third of a mile from the Forest Glen Metro Station. My politics are probably more centrist than most of the ADU supporters that have spoken ahead of me, and I frequently have a hard time defending Montgomery County against my friends from around the state who think we're anti-entrepreneurial and we've got a hostile regulatory environment. This is one issue where we can surprise the world, or at least the rest of the state, by letting the power of the free market help, at least in a small way, address some of our housing deficiencies. Let me and my neighbors decide a little bit more how we can use our most precious asset, our homes. The county clearly doesn't have a lot of extra money sitting around to buy or subsidize new housing, and I think you don't have the will to force developers to include ever-larger subsidies, which is just going to exacerbate the haves and the have-not problems that we have. Low-income residents or people who are just plain frugal, they really should have more options, and the ADU just seems like a perfect way to do that, whether we be buyers or sellers. The county doesn't have to dictate at a time where the ADU should be, providing yet another chance for the county to play against the way we're perceived by our neighbors in the region and around the state. Give it a try. Call it a pilot. I mean, here tonight, you're hearing some awfully strong concerns that are out there, hypothetical. It just seems like the only way you're going to get through this. There are legitimate enforcement issues, which I see in my neighborhood. You work on those, but that's separate from the issue that's here, and some way to test it out and let people see what's actually going to happen. And if I'm wrong, you change it. But I think what you're going to see, and you've seen in other places, this stuff works out a lot better than the various predictions are that are out there. It's a big county. I mean, it's a very diverse county, so you've got, for me, this is probably more educational than for you. I don't come to these too often, but to hear the range of comments, you're getting a good feel for what's out there, and yet, the lack of affordable housing in Montgomery County, if it's not the biggest problem, it's certainly the most cross-cutting that we have. And by trying this, you know, low-risk, and it's really a no-cost change for the county, which, you know, that isn't always the thing that council members are good at coming up with, but to have a no-cost change, you have the added benefit of showing our neighbors that we're kind of serious about doing business in the new economy. The county keeps getting, you know, slings and arrows from our neighbors, and whenever we don't do well, it's always, oh, that's just Montgomery County. So here's a shot to play against, you know, play against the way we're typically identified, you know, the chance to look forward and not backward. If we can fix some historic wrongs at the same time, that's great, but that's reason number, you know, 50 for doing it. It seems like an easy, no-risk thing to do, and I hope you'd push ahead with the proposed change.
Thank you very much. Mayor Jeffrey Slaven?
Thank you. Thank you, President Navarro, and thank you for indulging my time. I'm a member of the Land Lieutenant Commission. I had a hearing tonight. Thank you for supporting me for that. At its February 4, 2019, meeting, the Town of Somerset Town Council unanimously voted to submit a letter in opposition to proposal to propose ZTA 1901 related to accessory dwelling units. Here is a list of our comments, concerns with the proposed legislation. First of all, we understand the positive role accessory apartments play in providing additions to the affordable housing stock. We continue to support the conditional use that is the current law and oppose the limited use proposed in ZTA 1901. The current conditional use law lets neighbors and the local government know in advance what the owner plans to do rather than after work has begun. Posted signs are very helpful to concern neighbors and elected officials as part of the public notification process. The current conditional use law helps municipalities better plan for additional services, such as recreation or refuse recycling compost collections that may help the local government plan, budgetary or otherwise, before the arrival of additional residents in our jurisdiction. The current conditional use law could help to spread accessory dwelling units throughout a municipality, thus avoiding too much density and accompanying parking problems on individual streets. We question whether ADUs in urban districts would actually provide affordable housing stock or whether rental costs in areas such as the Town of Somerset would be prohibitive. I also wanted to mention that the Citizens Coordinating Committee on Friendship Heights, of which we are very active members, shares our views, and I think they weren't necessarily having the ability to testify tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Slaven. Councilman Reamer wanted to clarify something regarding HOAs.
Just wanted to ask, Jeff, can you please describe the legal authorities of HOAs on this matter?
HOAs have their own covenants, which are contracts between that entity and the individual homeowners. So whatever is in that covenant would still hold, no matter what the council said about it. The only rare times that those covenants have been overtaken were severe matters of public policy, restrictive covenants for race were not enforced by the courts, but that's the only instance in which they weren't enforced.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you so much. We're going to move on to Group F. Matt Zaborski, Cheryl Gannon, Edmund Morris, Gerald Sharp, Mary Dillon, and Richard Howie. 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 All right. So we'll begin with Mr. Zaborski, and your microphone, it's already on, so you're ready to go.
Good evening, Council President Navarro and members of the county council. My name is Matthew Zaborski. I'm a 35-year resident of Rockville, Maryland. I'd like to strongly voice my opposition to this proposed ZTA. I feel in addition to the many objections we've already heard, potential overcrowding of neighborhoods, disregard for zoning, et cetera, there's one very important objection that has not been discussed: money. I have spoken with our local office of the State Departments and Assessments and Taxation to discuss this proposed effect on property values if this ZTA was passed. I was informed that in all likelihood the assessed value would increase in the event that there was a second home on a lot, and certainly the land value would increase. Very simply put, a property owner would experience higher property taxes based on a higher assessment if this ZTA were enacted. I believe this is a disguised tax increase. No doubt, many of you all are very wary of raising property taxes, especially the newly-elected council members, as many property owners consider the current tax rate very onerous. I firmly believe this ZTA is a product of flawed, fast-tracked process, lacking transparency and without sufficient public education concerning its impact on tens of thousands of homes and hundreds of communities throughout the county. As we are very well aware, many of the current council members tout Montgomery County as a great place to live and raise a family. I also firmly believe this, by increasing the stock of, the county stock of affordable housing, it is a great goal, and that our community should strongly support it, but the adoption of this ZTA is not the answer. It is critically important that the county council, as our elected representatives, balance the need to increase the county affordable housing stock with the need to protect and preserve the integrity and quality of life in the county's single-family communities. As a 35-year resident of Montgomery County, I can definitely attest to the fine quality of life I have. My current community, Norbeck Meadows, is a shining example of a racially, ethnically, and generationally diverse community. I most strongly feel that ZTA 1901 would very, very significantly challenge the harmony in my neighborhood, as the goal of creating more affordable housing would be overshadowed by higher rents and higher taxes. I strongly urge the council not to pass this ZTA in its proposed form. I think it's time to go back to the drawing board. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl Gannon?
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Gannon, and I've been a resident of Montgomery County for just over 30 years. And even though I've been here so long, this is my first time testifying before the council, I feel strongly about this issue, and I came here tonight to offer my strong support for this zoning text amendment. My husband and I started out here in 1989 in a very small house in Tacoma Park, and then in 1998, we moved our growing family to a larger home in the woodside section of Silver Spring where we still live today. I have three main points I'd like to make tonight. First, when we bought our house, it was a great size for our family of five, and now, as an empty-nest couple, our needs have changed. My mother is 87, and she faces many challenges living on her own, but she can still live independently and would like to keep doing so. But on her fixed income, her condo fees are becoming an insurmountable burden for her. Living with us in a legal ADU with a kitchen would give her an independent life with help close by and free of the financial worry of dealing with her ever-increasing condo fees. It can be difficult to understand the dynamics of elderly caregiving if you haven't experienced it. Many seniors need a helping hand from family, but they worry about being a burden. They want to live on their own terms, the way they want to live, without fitting into the larger family routine and schedule. A legal ADU with a kitchen gives the elderly person privacy, freedom to come and go as they please, without worrying about interrupting the family or getting in the way, the freedom to cook on their own, leave the television on late at night, or just sit quietly without busy noise and conversation around them. ADUs can bring dignity and independence and peace of mind to families like mine. Second, ADUs promote inclusivity by allowing those who can't buy homes to live in neighborhoods they couldn't afford to live otherwise. My neighborhood is six blocks from Metro Station and two blocks from a future Purple Line station. An ADU in my house, over time, could give a young person a chance to live in an area that might be too expensive otherwise, would definitely be too expensive. My basement apartment couldn't compete with new high-rises with pools and gyms, so it would have to be priced at a lower price point. That would create a great opening for someone who can't afford rents in downtown Silver Spring. I had that exact helpful start in my own life when I was in my 20s, and I rented my own first apartment. It was an English basement on Capitol Hill. That apartment allowed me to live in a really great neighborhood that I could not have afforded in any other way. I loved that neighborhood, and I made lifelong friends there. I was never regarded as unwelcome or a stranger or with any suspicion, because I was a renter and there were many high-income homeowners around me. We should be providing these same opportunities to young people or working families.
Thank you. Edmund Morris?
Good evening. I'm afraid I'm going to have to make a few alterations to my original intended testimony, which was primarily a story of how, over 25 years, my family has been, at various points, in desperate need of the ability to create an ADU, but because of the special exception process, and, full disclosure, we live on an R60 here in the west end of Rockville, so there's a separate ADU process for that, too, couldn't, because the regulations prevented it, or they made the process too complicated, too expensive, too lengthy. But that house, five bedrooms now with a full basement, so 1,800 square feet of normal living space plus an 822-square-foot basement, a block away from Rockville's MC campus, two blocks away from Rockville Metro, three minutes from 270, would have been able to host all sorts of people had that basement apartment been able to be finished out, let alone the fact that we could have moved my father in there when he was paralyzed in 1998, and he would have been able to have full access to living space and kitchen, except the rules prevented it. The house was too new. There are a host of other things in that. The written testimony that I submitted is fine for the council to consider that. But the issue that I kind of have, as perhaps, I think, one of two people under the age of 40 in the area that's really on this issue, and as one of the few people who's been dealing with the process of actually trying to get an ADU built, is that there's a lot of concern about protection for the character of your neighborhood. We live on a dead-end residential street within walking distance of major transit. We are prevented by ordinance from creating housing that would allow people to make better use of that space, that we couldn't use all of it ourselves if we wanted to. College Gardens is another neighborhood very nearby. My grandparents have lived there since the 1960s. Same issues. There are plenty of places in the county where you have the space and the capacity, the transit where it would work. We're talking about asking for the option, not the requirement. Just because you have the space doesn't mean we're expecting you to do so, but why should the rest of us not be able to build them or have access to them? My friends, my colleagues, my coworkers over the last several years have been struggling to find places that they could afford to rent or to hope to own in this county, where many of us grew up and had grand expectations of what was going to be available to us because of some vague sense of a threat to the character of a neighborhood, or because of some promise that was made and then is perceived as having been broken, only because the people that are reaping the benefits from it now sometimes forget where they themselves started. Also, Ms. Gannon, thank you for that charming bit about the Capitol Hill English basement, because lots of people have lived in these sorts of units and continue to do so at great length. They're not necessarily just temporary. Some people just find it the way they would like to live. So please push forward on this proposal. It would help immensely. Thank you.
Thank you. Gerald Sharp? Mary Dillon?
Good evening. It's Mary Ann Dillon, and I guess I'm the last, one of the last speakers. I live at 10,002 Parkwood Drive in Bethesda. I'm here speaking both as an individual and also as Executive Director of Housing Initiative Partnership, which is a nonprofit housing developer and counseling agency that serves both Montgomery and Prince George's County. And we see folks every day in our office who are both homeowners who are struggling to pay the mortgage, and renters who cannot find a place where they live. So it's a very real issue to us every single day. Despite Montgomery County's strong commitment to affordable housing, we cannot build our way out of our affordability shortage. Most residential land in this county is zoned, single-family, so we've already boxed ourselves in with a single-family zoning that doesn't allow the flexibility to have more households in it. Encouraging the licensing... Encouraging the licensing of accessory dwelling units is a common-sense way to edge our housing inventory without dramatically altering neighborhoods or overburdening local schools. This will encourage more homeowners to follow the law and legally and safely convert space into ADUs rather than operating illegally, as too many do now. We think that ADUs are a win-win for everyone. ADUs allow a variety of households earning a range of incomes to live side by side with access to transit, school, and jobs. ADUs in older, close-in communities reduce sprawl by lowering the pressure on new construction in far-flung parts of the county. And ADUs enable seniors aging in place to afford their homes by generating rental income. I want to use the rest of my time to talk about some of the most common objections that I hear and that we've heard tonight about ADUs. The first objection is that they will change the nature of single-family neighborhoods. The average household size in this county is 2.78 people. Single-family homes with three bedrooms plus can accommodate more than 2.78 people. Certainly, when I was growing up, I'm a baby boomer, so I was used to really large households when I was growing up. These houses can accommodate much larger families than they do right now. Many households, especially with older homeowners, are small and could easily accommodate more. No one is forcing you to build an ADU. It is a choice. It is giving you another choice for a housing option for your home. The second objection I hear is that they'll overburden public schools and strain public services. Again, ADUs are more likely to appeal to small households that don't already have children. And while we can't quantify how many houses would, how many ADUs would be developed before for this, there really are, there's very limited housing that will actually fit into an ADU. So even with this liberalization, most houses are not going to fit into the ADU, be able to be eligible for ADU, and most homeowners are not going to choose to have this. It's simply giving homeowners more of an option. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I have added one more person. It's Mr. Richard Hoy.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President, for allowing me to speak. My name is Richard Hoy. I am a retired firefighter from Montgomery County. I live in Bethesda, and for full disclosure, I was born in Tacoma Park. So I am testifying here today about, in support of this ZTA. As a firefighter, I made a decision to live in the place where I work years ago, and that decision involved renting rooms to strangers in my, in the house that I could not afford to buy, which I bought through the support of a family member to co-sign the loan. I paid the mortgage through the rent I received and through the salary that I received. The salary alone would not qualify for me for this, and I could not qualify for housing assistance because I just made slightly above, as a single person, what would qualify. So this ZTA will certainly help many people in my situation. In Montgomery County, of the over 1,000 career firefighters that provide service throughout the county, only about 15% of them live in Montgomery County. This is a public safety issue, and the police in past winter storms have actually had to rent blocks of hotel rooms for their officers so that they would be available for duty during planned storms. On my little street, there are 16 houses. About one-third of the houses are not the traditional single-family unit. They are, is a group rental home, there is an informal ADU, there's an Airbnb. I rent, and my neighbor across the street, a good friend, hosts extended family. I actually allow one of those family members to park their car in my driveway, because my renter and myself, we do not have a car, and parking is restricted to one side of the street. We live in harmony in this condition. What I would like to speak about more importantly is that this, what this does, and it has not been spoken about, is that this builds social capital. As a firefighter and as a council staff aide in years past, I have seen the great unmet need of citizens around the county. And by building the informal networks and the availability of people with different incomes and lifestyles and availability to help their neighbor, to help the neighbor inside the house who has fallen and can't get up, or to help the neighbor across the street who has a heart attack and needs help shoveling snow, to build those social networks through integrated communities is what this has the most power to do, and is why I am so excited about it, as well as what it would do for me as a pensioner. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so I just want to remind everybody that the Planning, Housing, and Economic Development Committee will hold its first work session on March 18. Thank you, everybody, and drive home safely, or take the metro, or other things.